You have the fun, the fun organization. It's how.
Hello.
Your mother gets the hard stuff.
I know.
So hey.
It's just going through transition.
Okay, we can complete this, this meeting. I don't think we need to turn on the, on the video, but. The Moraga Town Council held a closed session meeting on existing litigation. There are no reportable actions. I hereby adjouring, adjourn this special meeting. It is 5:42 PM on the 12th of March, 2025. Hi Denise. Are we ready to turn? Is the, is it already?
Already on.
It's already on. Everybody ready?
Ready.
Okay. Excuse me. Okay. It is, I call to order the Town of Moraga Town Council meeting, regular meeting for Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. It is 5:37 PM. Okay, roll call. Let the record show that all Town Council members are present. That moves us on to Pledge of Allegiance. Julie, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
All right. Um, really? Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You did great. Thank you.
Didn't think I would remember that from elementary school.
Okay, presentations. You know, it's our honor tonight to address the Red Cross Month, and I believe we have a visitor.
Also a Moraga resident.
So I understand. That's great. If you could, Diana, if you could, is it turned on?
It's on.
Diana, the floor is yours. Would you like to, would you like to make a, a comment or?
Yes. Um, and the proclamation has some things in it that I just want, one thing in it particularly that I wanted to address because this is about what we do every day in Contra Costa County to help our residents who have a catastrophic loss like a house fire or an apartment fire. And often in that case, they've lost everything and they don't have insurance. And so we show up in the middle of the night with a little card that allows them to, that has some money on it that allows them to go get a hotel room or food or clothes or whatever they need. And then we help them later to, if we can, add more money to that to help them recover. It's called recovery. And also we are connected to a lot of different organizations who can provide other services and we can hook them up with them. And I think that's one of the things that we do that most of the people in the community don't really know about. They see us on TV when there's a big disaster or they see blood services going around with a blood mobile, but they really don't realize that there's a whole group of people who are willing to get up in the middle of the night and attend these fires when the fire department calls them. So I think that's something that I want to call out as one of the most important things that the Red Cross does in this community.
Diana, thank you. Let's go through any comments, and I'm, I'm happy to start off comments from the, from the DM, DS, excuse me. I have personal experience with the Red Cross as a volunteer for many years. I can attest to the very positive impact that the Red Cross has, and I think that it's an organization that deserves all the credit, all the recognition that it gets. And so I commend that. Other comments from the Town Council?
Because of the Red Cross, I know that I have type A negative blood.
Ooh, good, good one.
So I, I'm a popular guy. My late father was also a popular guy, so he definitely made that one of my early lessons in civic responsibility, so thank you.
Other comments from the Town Council? Are there any comments from the audience tonight on this? No? Well, then we, we have a proclamation and we will, we will follow the historic practice of the Town Council and rotate through the, the proclamation. Kara, if you would start, I will go next, then Lisa, then Graham, then Brian. It'll come back to Kara and then I'll wrap it up.
A proclamation declaring March 2025 as Red Cross Month. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, when we recognize the.
Arinda Neighborhood Group came to approach staff and asked if we would put together a letter of support and ask the council to bless it for the mayor to sign. We did something like this several months back to help them, and they did get $100,000 grant. And that's being used, but I believe that's for vegetation abatement type work. This would go beyond that. This, there's a, a grant opportunity with the United States Department of Agriculture, Forest Service, Community Wildfire Defense Grant Application Program. That's a mouthful. So we did look into this on, on their behalf. This appears to be a. Well, it is a legitimate opportunity. They're looking for a $1.25 million grant to, basically a quarter million dollars spent over five years. And that money would be available to the community to help with home hardening efforts and that, and that type of thing. So just another opportunity to help our residents make their homes safer to be ready for a fire. That's the bottom line. The details are on the staff report. There, there's no impact on us to, to do that. There's a minor staff cost to put together, but indirect costs in the budget. So it's council's prerogative if you want to authorize the mayor to sign the, the letter of support that's in the packet. Thank you.
Questions by the?
Oh, I have a comment.
That's, we'll come to that. I just want to confirm, this is, the 1.25 million, that's for both Arinda and Moraga, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yes.
Still, still a significant amount of money for, for us. Other questions from, now, questions or comments from the audience, the public? Bring it back for comments.
Thank you to staff for bringing this forward. I was actually on a Zoom and phone call. We had some issues, it was when it was hailing, with Mark Evans earlier today. He is a real person. He's awesome. And fire safe, or fire wise neighborhoods are fantastic. It helps us all in, in our community to be able to organize on the neighborhood level. And I myself am doing that for my neighborhood of 17 homes, and we just submitted our fire wise application actually disconnected from this right before this meeting. So I encourage anyone in Moraga who is either unsure if they are in a fire wise neighborhood, they can reach out to, to Fire Wise and get more, more details. You have a neighborhood captain if you do have one. In addition to that, if you don't, and you are concerned with fire risk, as you should be, I encourage you to do what I did. It's easy. Mark will walk you through it. There's other, I talked to, to Scott from the Campo Lindo neighborhood that are, where a mayor lives. They have one of the bigger ones in town and they can help walk you through all of the steps. It's again, it's a great way to organize all of the different things that all of us can do collectively on, at our homes to make us fire safe. Thank you.
I will add my, also my, my expression of thanks to, to both Mark Evans and Steve Hoyt, who is the, sort of the primary leader in this in, on the Moraga side. So we got Arinda, Moraga. This is another example of where the two towns are coordinating their efforts in a very important area. That's, that's okay.
Do we know when the grant may well be awarded and the funds distributed? And if so, how it's prorated between the two communities?
I believe it's fairly quick with the next few months for award. And then there'll be criteria that have to be satisfied. That's at least bases the, the past, the previous award.
Mm-hmm. Gotcha. Just given the, the timing of the seasons and where.
Yeah, I don't think it's three years and out there. It's fairly soon. Yeah. Other comments? Is there a motion for approval of this?
I move approval of item 6.4.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously? Okay. Thank you. That takes care of the consent agenda items. We now move on to item seven, which are announcements and reports on activities. Let's, let's do that. Anyone want to provide a report on their activities since the last meeting?
When was the last meeting?
The 26th of February.
Mr. Mayor, I'll start.
Great.
I attended the Contra Costa Mayor's Conference in Lafayette on March 6th along with Council member Graham Teal and Town Manager Scott Mitnick. Mayor Walackey was out of town, so I reported on three things, and I'd like to reemphasize all three of them. First of all, I, I announced that our St. Mary's Gales basketball team had finished the season 27-4, and we're really proud of our Gales. And this week, they, they led a heartfelt effort to continue with that streak. Unfortunately, despite Valiant efforts, that didn't happen last night, but we're very proud of them and we're happy to have them here in town. I reported on that, as well as I announced that we had a town hall that was hosted by Congressman DeSalle. Over 500 people attended, and that concerned activities happening with the federal government at this time. It was more than a sellout crowd. And lastly, and most importantly, we announced our community town hall on emergency preparedness and fire safety hosted by our Moraga Arinda Fire Chief and our Police Chief, and that will happen on April 21st, also at St. Mary's College.
Thank you. Graham, do you have anything to update?
No new reports.
Thank you. Brian?
Nothing this week.
Kara?
Yes. For, I'll just report that for work, I attended the, I'm a member of the Bay Area Council Board of Directors, and I attended their Sacramento Lobby Day on the 4th of March. We had presentations by the Chair of Assembly Transportation Committee, Lori Wilson. In addition, Assembly Member Buffy Wicks, our State Senator, Tim Grayson, who sits on Assembly, or I'm sorry, Senate Transportation Committee and Senate Banking Committee. I also had the opportunity to have side conversations with many of these legislators just to bring up many of the issues that are of concern to our residents here in Moraga. I also on, I think it was last Friday, sorry, keeping track of my own calendar is a job unto itself. I attended the County Connection Board Marketing and Legislation Committee, and we heard about some interesting bills, including the one that was introduced SB 71, which is looking to expand the temporary exemption that was provided for a sequel exemption for transit projects and make it permanent. It's an interesting bill. More to come on that. And I believe that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Kara. I'll, I'll wrap it up, at least from the Town Council standpoint. On March 3rd, we had the mid-year Audit and Finance Committee meeting led by Treasurer Bob Kennedy, and both Kara and I attended that, participated in that, and we'll hear more about that a little bit later tonight. I also participated in honoring three JM students who received Good Character Awards from the Sunrise Rotary Club. All three have practiced exemplary behavior demonstrating Good Character, used to be called Citizen, Good Citizenship, names being Amelia Drury, Maya Hittmakmet, and Paul Lumiri. Lumiri. And I commend them. I also received, and I hopefully all members of the Town Council received, the mid-year financial report for the Moraga GAD, the Geological Hazard Assessment District. I, I had a couple of questions. I talked with our Treasurer Dave Fernandez. I just note that it's, you know, sort of not directly related to the Town Council, but it's connected. And so that's all I have to report. Town Managers, do you have anything you want to share with us at this moment?
Mr. Mayor, Mayor of the Council, I'll do the follow-up at, at the end, but I, I do, we heard the comments about the Gales earlier, so the last two nights over at the college, some of you and your Town Manager were there for their watch party. So two nights ago was a little more fun than last night, with the victory over Pepperdine, and then it's tough to beat Gonzaga anytime, right? But to have three victories in the same year is a challenge. But the men's basketball team is still the West Coast champions outright, winning the conference throughout the year. And then Sunday, the NCAA pairings will be announced, so we'll find out where the Gales land in the tournament, and I'm sure there'll be another watch party opportunity, if not more than one opportunity. So we're really proud of them. And when you watch the game, when it's broadcast over the nation, there's constant reference to Moraga, so it's really cool. So hopefully they'll do well.
So get your bracket leagues organized.
Darn right.
Thank you. Oh, so that moves us on to public hearings, and we have no public hearings this evening. That moves us on to department reports, excuse me. We have Planning Commission and Parks and Recreation Commission appointments. Scott, is there, excuse me, a presentation on this subject?
Well, I'll wing it. On that one, Council, you, you do have openings for the, the Planning Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission. It's really your call on how you want to handle the, the Planning Commission. And then I think, Mr. Mayor, you, you can, you can go through and, and see what your, your colleagues think. I don't know if Amy wants to add anything, but no. Okay.
Okay. I'm trying to get it to come up. Oh, okay. So let me try to set the scene here. This year, we have five appointments to make on the Planning Commission. We have interviewed three of the candidates. Those being Alexis Maple, who is a incumbent, Casey Raine, who's currently not on the Planning Commission, and William Weber. We have two additional candidates who have submitted applications. Those are Marcus Bodie, who is a incumbent on the Planning Commission, and also Brenda Lester, thank you, who is also on the Planning Commission. There are a couple complexities that we have to deal with. One of them is that one of the five seats is a one-year term. It's to fulfill Graham Teal's unfulfilled term. And secondly, that one of the candidates, Brenda Lester, has termed out, and the municipal code allows us to reappoint her, but we have to essentially give reason for doing such. I think that there, so first question is, do we want to try to address all five seats tonight? Could you each weigh in on that?
Yeah, I think we've got five candidates, five open seats, and second time before the council in two weeks. I feel that we should be prepared to make a decision.
I agree with that.
Brian?
Well, I was able to watch the meeting last time, but I thought there was yet people to be interviewed.
So the, the, the two candidates yet to be interviewed are Brenda Lester and Marcus Bodie. Now, and I understand you, you may not be familiar with those two members of the Planning Commission. I think the rest of us are very familiar with them.
Okay.
So I, I think the question for you is, would you be willing to accept that maybe three or four?
If everyone else knows them, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. Thank you. Kara? And I, I am likewise strongly in support of moving forward tonight. We've, we owe it to, to all the candidates who have applied and who have been patient with us. Okay. So what I'm hearing is that all members of the Town Council support appointing the five candidates who have applied. The, the other decision we have to make is who gets assigned to the one-year term to, to fulfill Graham's term? And I have my opinion on this, but I, I seek the input from, from others. Graham, you want to kick off again or?
Uh, well, given it was my seat that I left vacant, and that a thought just came to me as you were refreshing our understanding of people's terms, term limits, and who may well be past a term limit. And also just given the sensitivity of we do have two new applicants, my opinion is they should get a, a fresh start here. And perhaps, I know we haven't briefed Brenda on this, and if she's watching, apologies for coming up with this now, perhaps she moves into that one-year term, given she's been in a role of the Planning Commissioner for the longest period I think of amongst the current and also the applicants renewing their application.
I'll just note that I've talked with Brenda and she agrees with that.
Thank you for having that conversation with her.
Others?
I'm completely aligned. I'm glad that, I think that's the perfect direction.
I support that. I think it makes perfect sense.
Very good.
Makes sense to me, too.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the public on this?
Mr. Mayor, are you taking public comment on all of the positions, including the Parks and Rec Commissioner position?
Right now, we're talking only about the Planning Commission.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Thank you for, for helping me with that. So I think that brings us to a motion. Is anyone prepared to make that motion? Otherwise, I can do it.
I move that we appoint Alexis Maple, Casey Raine, William Weber, and Marcus Bodie to two-year terms to the Planning Commission, and we appoint Brenda Lester to the one-year term remaining from the vacated Planning Commission seat that was Graham Teal.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimously approved? Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Brenda.
Okay. We do.
Thank you for stepping up.
Thanks for your confidence.
Okay. Let's, let's move on to the Parks and Rec Commission, or what I call the Happy Department. We have a total of four seats available and two applications that have been submitted, three applications that have been submitted. But we have only one of the candidates here with us tonight. Do, do we have a, a report out on the other two candidates? John Panetta and, and Greg Crossley?
Yeah, I do, actually, Mr. Mayor, Town Clerk. We have received applications from Gian Panetta and from Greg Crossley, and they will be able to attend the next Town Council meeting on March 26th.
Okay. Shall we interview?
Want me to introduce myself?
Julie, would you like to make any opening comments?
Yeah, my name is Julie Sanders. I can just tell you a little bit about myself. I don't know if that's a question that's going to be asked, but I grew up here in Moraga, right across the street from Mr. Walackey. And I have worked in outdoor education for six years, so I know outdoor ed, outdoor programs really well. I love them. I believe in the town parks. Walk my dog in the town parks all the time, so big a proponent. And I've been on the council, on the commission for two years, I think, already. And right now, I'm the Chair of the Commission as well. Yeah.
Great. Questions for, for Julie, please? I'll ask a question.
Of course.
I got, no, I'm not going to go there. In your two years?
Yes.
Any particular activity that you really found to be significant and enjoyed because it was so significant?
Yeah, I think all the programs are really important. I think they bring a different, I think all the parts of the Parks and Rec are really important, but I think the programs that the staff runs especially are really important. Coming from that background where the organization I was working at ran similar programs, I just see the need in the community, and a lot of private programs are really, really expensive. And so the town programs make it more accessible for kids to come from different areas of the town and even outside of the town, to still enjoy those activities and get to learn and be outside and have that nourishment. But I also think the event, the one-off events that the town puts on, I really enjoyed the Pear Festival. This year, we had obviously the 50th ceremony, 50th year ceremony, and I was honored to be a part of that. I helped kind of corral people and I somehow got a walkie-talkie and started moving people around, which was really fun and cool to see all the different groups coming by. But I also seeing just everyone in the park after and everything pear and getting so excited about that. I think that's a really unique program and opportunity that this town has, and I like that the Parks and Rec runs that and that we get to be a part of that. And then the other one is just the adult programs. I think it's hard to make friends as an adult. It's hard to find activities if you're not a senior or a child. And so as a young adult, I've been to some of the classes that are run by the park for adults, like the resin class and some of the other things, and I just think it's really cool that we put on those kind of events as well.
Thank you, Julie.
So everything, basically.
Any, any other questions for Julie? And I know, could you very briefly describe the, the ranch?
Oh, yes. So I used to work at Sienna Ranch, which if you live around here, you should know about it. It's across from Akalani's. It's a 22-acre property that does outdoor programs for kids year-round, rain or shine. And so yeah, I ran the ranch for six years, so all the programs, staff, everything. And now, actually, I'm doing something different. I work in the city for an advertising agency, but I'm an ops person. So I think that also gives me the lens of just seeing big picture, planning ahead. And I know right now, for the Parks and Rec, we're going through the planning master plan as well, along with you all, but specifically for the parks. And so being able to have that lens of like, okay, what are we thinking about? How does this impact people? What processes are in place? Like, how can we make this better? I kind of always have that lens on, so excited to see it from that side, along with my other experience.
Julie, thank you so much.
Yes? I, I would love to speak to you afterward about Sienna Ranch. I have three little ones, and we've been talking about starting them in some of those programs. My question is, given your experience, we, we wouldn't survive. Um, my question is, um, given your experience, we, we wouldn't survive without, uh, the town's summer camps, uh, in the summertime, uh, neither would our childcare provider. Um, so what types of deficiencies, based on your experience, do you see in the, the services that we, uh, provide to, to, to youth particularly, um, that we might be able to improve in and maybe can be covered under that master plan?
Yeah, I wouldn't say there's deficiencies. I think there's room to grow always. Um, I think the hardest part about the programs, I don't know if this is true for you, Mackenzie, but I found this, is just hiring good people. Um, I think kids are the most important thing to their parents, and so I think it's, um, hard to find really great, um, staff that either only want to work the summer because it's a seasonal job, or ones that want to come back year after year. Um, and there's competitive, you know, you can be a nanny, you can be, there's other things that maybe pay more, so I think it's hard to find staff. So I would just continue our, like, outreach efforts in finding people and, um, making that a priority. And then I just think the breadth of programs. I think Mackenzie and the team are really, really good at trying new things, um, and I think that's important, like, seeing what people like, and if it's not working, don't waste our resources on that, try something different. Um, I know we talked about, there's a lot of potential for different types of programming that maybe we can do that other, like Lafayette or Arinda can't. We have a skate park, they don't. So maybe there's other opportunities that we're, we can leverage these other, um, activities that maybe they're not doing, and also pay attention to what they are doing, so we're not just competing, but rather like, making a encompassing, like, oh yeah, we're going to get kids from Arinda and Lafayette because we're the only ones to offer this. So that's what I would say.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Julie, thank you. Other questions? Comments? Any, any comments from the audience?
Love what you said.
Can I have a motion? Do I, can I have a motion to appoint, uh, Julie Sanders for an additional two-year term to the Parks and Rec Commission?
I move to appoint Julie Sanders to an additional two-year term to the Park and Recreation Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second to motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Woo!
Congratulations!
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to shout out Mackenzie. She's, she's great.
Okay. Now, I'd like to say that we're, we're done with this, but we still have that outstanding seat. Is it one? Now, if we, if we get the two, Gian and, and Greg to, we're comfortable with them, do we have one or two more seats that we, we need? One?
But I believe there's another application that will be hopefully coming in.
Good evening, Council. I believe that there is another application that will be submitted shortly, so hopefully we will be able to fill that seventh seat.
Okay, and that was Mackenzie Brady, and...
So that'll fill, so with the applications, that fills?
That potentially fills all spots, all seats on Parks and Rec. So I suggest that we don't take any further action on this item tonight, if you're all okay with that. Okay?
Thank you.
Great. Moving right along, that takes us up to, I think, 9B, which is the fiscal year 2024-25 mid-year budget update and adjustments.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I'll start before we turn it over to Katie. So you have, one, two, three, four. The next five items are budget-related, and so Katie Bruner, our Administrative Services Director, your Chief Financial Officer, she's going to go through them. But the first one's going to be the current fiscal year. We're in the mid-year halfway point. She's going to talk to you about that and the budget, um, budget update and adjustments, and that's gone to the, the Audit and Finance Committee. Then the other items are, she will do the same thing with the mid-year, just for the hacienda items, and we get to that. Councilwoman Hillis will have to excuse himself due to a conflict. Then she'll talk about, the next agenda item will be the town's reserve policies and the unassigned fund balance, and for, and then after that, the initial 10-year general fund financial forecast. That was one of the council, um, priorities and goals from last time around. And then after that, your Poker Director's going to come up and walk you through the Maraga Road and Canyon Road Complete Streets Project from the design standpoint. So all these items are connected, and I'm sorry that it's going to take us a, a little time, but, and then lastly, as, Katie's been with the town for a year now, and she's done a really, um, good job, and I hope you've noticed and appreciate the enhanced user-friendliness of the staff reports that come out of that department, the clarity, um, and not to mention the good work. And it's not just Katie, it's her team that's, um, that works for her, and they're, they're, they're great work. I like it because there's very minimal direction and you just get it done. So those are my opening comments. Thank you for your indulgence. Now, we'll turn it to Katie.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Council. Katie Bruner, your Administrative Services Director. So the first item tonight is our fiscal year 2024-25 mid-year budget update, and this is for, um, everything except for the hacienda de las flores operating budget, which will be presented separately, excuse me. Oh, I forgot to turn on. There we go. Okay, so tonight, we are recommending that council adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2024-25 mid-year budget adjustments. First, before we get started, I'll jump into some mid-year results as of December 31st, 2024. That's our midpoint through our fiscal year, which ends June 30th. So for the general fund revenues, overall, uh, total revenues and transfers in are about 30% of budget halfway through the year. Property tax receipts, these are actually in line with when we normally get property tax receipts. Um, we get a small bit in October, we get another chunk in December, and then wrapping up in April and June. So this, while it's low, it's not 50% like you would expect, it's normal. Same with, uh, sales tax. Sales tax, we actually get, um, and we get our sales tax about two months after you pay at the, at the cash register, um, and then we really get a true-up every quarter. So this is sales tax based on sales and estimates through October of 2024, um, because it's always a lag. So also, also on track. Department revenues are about 43% to budget, um, and then we do our transfers in at the end of the fiscal year, when we're closing out our fiscal year. So our general fund expenditures, overall, we're, um, town expenditures in the general fund are 52% to budget, um, halfway through the year. I want to note that expenditures in the general government category include one-time payments that are due in July of our CALPER's unaccrued, unfunded accrued liability, our UAL, um, and our insurance premiums for the town. So those are big, you know, large expenditures that are due in July and are incorporated in those, those numbers. And now on to our recommended budget adjustments for the general fund. So for revenue, we're recommending another $50,000 in property tax revenue. Um, when we get our first payment in October, we get a statement of what we expect to receive for the entire year. So we're realigning that, and then that helps us realign for next budget and future projections. Um, and then about $66,000 in Parks and Recreation Summer Camp and Special Event revenues. So we're seeing increased Summer Camp, uh, registration in line with prior years. Um, and then we've had, with the town's 50th anniversary, we've had some additional special event revenue that we've already recognized, and so we want to adjust our budget as well. And then we're also recommending increasing Parks and Recreation expenditure appropriation by $41,000 for temporary Parks and Recreation staff. We've got more kids going to Summer Camp. We've got to have the staff to run the Summer Camps. Um, and then $25,000 for supplies and materials for upcoming special events. So, um, those includes, we've got bunnies and brews coming up. I'm sure Mackenzie can give you a whole litany of all of the events we've got coming up. Um, and then also, another example would be merchandise that we sell at our Pear Necessity Store, both online and at town events. So overall, with these changes, and this is the overall general fund budget, um, we are projecting, uh, that the general fund will have revenues exceed expenditures by about $83,000 at the end of this fiscal year. Now, we only have one recommended adjustment in other funds, and this is for our ARPA fund. Um, this is a transfer to our capital budget of $32,000. And I want to clarify, all of our ARPA funds have been received. They've been obligated and/or spent per the ARPA regulations. This is an administrative cleanup to make sure that we can actually transfer the money from the fund in which we accounted for our ARPA funds into our capital project to, uh, storm drain projects that have already been authorized by your council. So this is merely an administrative cleanup to make sure we have the appropriate, um, appropriation authority. And with that, again, we're recommending that council adopt a resolution approving our recommended budget adjustments, and I am available for questions.
Any questions? In this case, Carrie and I have been through this already. We used to board it previously, and I still do.
Likewise.
Do we want to vote on issues if we go on? I'm hearing the legal expert saying yes, so...
Public comment?
Oh, yes, yes. Public comment? Are there any public comments on this? I see a follow-up. Is there a motion to...
I move that we approve the mid-year, uh, adjustments to fiscal year, uh, 2024-25 operating budget.
Your second?
Second.
And just to clarify, a, a mo- motion to approve, uh, as set forth in the resolution provided by staff?
Correct.
Thank you.
That is accepted. And was it accepted by the Senate?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. That moves us on to 9C, which is the 2024-25...
Oops, excuse me, sorry. That moves us on to, uh, 9C, which is the fiscal year 2024-25 mid-year budget update and adjustments for the hacienda de las flores operating budget.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I will recuse and leave the room for this item as my, uh, primary residence is within 500 feet.
Thank you, Carrie.
The floor is yours.
Okay. Okay. So as stated, this is only, um, a budget update and adjustments as recommended for the hacienda operating budget. Um, and again, we are recommending that your council approve a resolution, um, adopting the mid-year budget adjustments. Um, so I want to note, in AFC, um, we did have some inaccurate numbers for the hacienda, so these numbers, it included some non-hacienda operating, um, expenditures in the budget line. So these figures in the staff report and the presentation have been corrected, and they went over to the other staff report. Um, so revenue, um, revenue, uh, to date is about 65% of budget, um, and then our expenditures are about 41% of budget through December 31st. So we are recommending an increase in both revenue and expenditure appropriation of $50,000. Um, this, we are expecting, um, increased utility costs, expenditures, uh, related to Wedgewood's use of the facility, and, um, then we also expect those costs to be offset by, or to be reimbursed by Wedgewood. So, so that's our recommendation, is to approve a resolution, um, adopting the fiscal year 24-25 mid-year budget adjustments for the hacienda operating budget. And staff is available for questions.
Are there any questions? Nope. Public comment? Nope. Thank you. Um, so I, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2024-25 mid-year budget update and adjustments for the hacienda de las flores operating budget as proposed and in the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed by four members of the town council, with Councilmember Carrie Hillis abstaining. Thank you. Brian, could you let Carrie know that? He sensed it.
Hey, that takes us on to 9D, which is update to the town's rev- reserve policy and allocation of fiscal year 2023-24 excess unassigned fund balance.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. This will be, have a little bit more discussion, I anticipate. Um, so, good evening, Council. Katie Bruner, Administrative Services Director. So, um, tonight, we are asking or recommending your council to adopt a resolution updating the town's general fund reserve policy and allocating general fund unassigned fund balances that are in excess of the town's 50% reserve policy, um, to the asset replacement fund and the pension trust fund. Um, this was presented to, uh, the Audit and Finance Committee on March 3rd, and they are supportive of these recommendations. So, our, the town's current reserve policy was established in 2009, and then it was updated again in 2015. It established a general fund reserve equal to 50% of the prior year fiscal year's operating expenditures. And it also desig- it also made, clearly stated that our unassigned fund balance for the general fund would be, would be the general fund reserve. Um, and then it does designated that any excess fund balance above the 50% reserve policy would be transferred to the town's asset replacement fund. So staff is recommending a couple of changes to the policy. Some are more administrative and then one is more, um, more significant. So the first is to designate the general fund reserve as a committed fund balance designation. GASB 54 is the, it's the governmental accounting standards board, thank you. Um, it, they set the rules for governmental accounting. GASB 54 required every government agency to designate different levels of fund balance and who has authority to designate with what and what they're to be used for. So in 2011, um, our committed fund balances that were designated represent a, a portion of fund balance that can only be used for specific purposes pursuant to constraints imposed by formal action of the government's highest level of decision-making authority, which is our town council. So we're recommending that, rather than having the reserve, our general fund reserve, sit as an undesigned fund balance, which means it's available for any purpose, to clearly designate it that it is a reserve and that town council is the one who can allocate and authorize use of those reserves. So we are also recommending to calculate the 50% reserve policy based on our, um, the current year's adopted budgeted operating expenditures. Um, and I'll, I have a slide, my next slide demonstrates this a little bit more, but right now, we currently calculate our reserves levels based on last year's expenditures. If our reserves are for fiscal emergencies or natural disasters or unforeseen circumstances, we should be calculating it that based on what we expect to spend in that fiscal year, so our current year's budget. Um, and we kind of do that already, this would just codify it. We do it in practice. Um, and then we are also recommending to allow fund balances above the 50% reserve policy to be allocated by town council for one-time uses, rather than allocating it all to the asset replacement fund. Um, this allows staff to make recommendations and council to designate, to plan for short and long-term needs, to take advantage of higher one-time fund balances, but then also make sure that we're not using one-time funds for ongoing items to ensure that we don't create a structural budget deficit. And so this is, um, so our fiscal year 23-24 budget, or year, fiscal year, ended with an ending general fund unassigned fund balance of about eight, 8.3 million dollars. And so this exceeded our 50% reserve policy by 2.7 million. Uh, we, we had that high fund balance, um, in part because our expenditures in fiscal year 24, um, the transfers out included the movement of our pension tru- trust fund from our general fund into its own fund. So we really had operating revenue and expenditures, um, with a $1.5 million surplus. And then due to, uh, change in, um, how we reported our beginning fund balances related to how we funded the pension trust, that, that resulted in the other one and a half million dollars, roughly. Um, and if you can see, looking at our total recommended adjusted budget, and this incorporates the figures we just presented earlier, um, we're projecting that, um, our fund balance at the end of fiscal year 25 will be 8.4 million dollars, um, and that will end up with about 1.9 million dollars, um, of funds in excess of our reserve requirement. Um, so that's also, this... So that's also, this also helps demonstrate why we're recommending calculating the reserve based on budget versus actuals because year to year that might change. So of that $1.9 million, we are recommending that we transfer a million dollars to the asset replacement fund and then contribute $500,000 to the town section 115 pension trust. So the asset replacement fund is one of our mechanisms for funding, maintenance and improvement projects to town facilities. It also replaces towns' capital assets like vehicles, technology, equipment. And it's typically funded through excess fund balance exceeding the reserve policy. So it doesn't have an ongoing dedicated funding source. We, but we allocate funds to it as funds are available. It currently has, or at the end of June 30th, 2024, it had about a $621,000 fund balance. And that's fully committed to capital projects or anticipated equipment replacement purchases through the 2025 budget. So our pension trust, in fiscal year 23, town council contributed one and a half million dollars of Paulus Colorado's funds to fund the pension trust. We have a current balance of just under $1.8 million as of the end of last month. And our pension costs are projected to increase or, and currently expected to peak in fiscal year 2032-33. And so the intent of the pension trust is to really help smooth the impact of rising pension costs on our operating budget to help smooth out the curve. And this is our projected CalPERS unfunded accrued liability. So this is the difference between our funded, the, the UAL is the difference between the estimated cost of future benefits and the assets that are already set aside to pay for those benefits to really demonstrate the, the sharp increase that we're currently experience, experiencing. The town's UAL was about $765,000 in this fiscal year, fiscal year 25. And it's projected to reach about a million dollars in fiscal year 28 or 29, and then to peak in those early 30s. And then CalPERS annual investment returns are, as well as their discount rate are big drivers of what this, of the curve and how it goes. And so that leads us again to our recommendation. We're asking town council to adopt a resolution updating the town's general fund reserve policy and allocating the general fund unassigned fund balance exceeding the 50% reserve policy with a million dollars to the asset replacement fund and $500,000 to the pension trust. Staff is available for questions.
Katie, great. Thank you very much for that. Could you give the council, especially for the new members, background on why back in 2015, any surpluses were allocated to asset replacement?
So.
That's good background information.
Yes. So my understanding of in 2015 is we really have had, we had a, two funds in 2015 for, one for like facilities maintenance and then another for asset replacement, which I think was geared towards more equipment. But there was no funding source for either. So they combined them. I think it was also we had, and we still have unfunded asset replacement needs. And so we wanted to create a funding source to dedicate funding to that. And I would say that this recommended change in policy doesn't necessarily, we still have an unfunded need of our assets, of all of our assets. Our public works director could, could speak a lot to that. But we also have, we have, we have other needs as well. We know pension trusts, pension costs are going to hit us, you know, in the next couple of years. We're experiencing that now. So I think contributing to the asset replacement fund would still be a priority from staff's perspective. But I think we wanted to take advantage of this larger one-time available fund balance and grant some flexibility to really meet, try to meet as many needs as possible.
Right. So in summary, at least one factor, for a number of years, we basically had no funds for asset replacement.
Correct.
Of course, that's, that's going out, that's an entity going out of business. And, and just, could you go back to the bar chart for just a quick second? For those of you not familiar, well familiar, and I know Brian is for sure, with the unfunded accrued liability issue that almost all towns, well, almost all towns who have CalPERS retirement funds faces, is that this curve changes, can change significantly on a year-to-year basis simply because of the rate of return that CalPERS actually gets relative to what they set as their target. And it's, it's, it's a challenge for us. Anyway, other challenges, questions for Katie?
I had two. So Katie, on the asset replacement fund, do we have a prioritized list of where we may expect the million to be spent in a timeframe?
Yes, so the, during budget development, public, sorry, Public Works creates the capital budget, and that does fund more facilities projects. And then we also worked with departments to discuss equipment replacement and come up with a list of what's due for replacement. Can it live another year? Can we push it? So, so those are conversations that happen during budget development. And then we bring forward recommendations based on that.
Gotcha. Okay.
And there is a asset replacement, you know, a longer-term plan, looking at what needs, what is scheduled to be replaced versus what can't be replaced.
Understood. And for the pension funds, so we see this going forward, this will be a potential recurring item when we do have a budget surplus that will look to dedicate a certain percentage of the funds towards this? At least over the next eight, nine years?
Potentially, I think part of the recommendation now is to put it in there and let it grow. So then that way we can, again, my next item, we'll talk about how we consider developing a policy to, when we use the trust and how we use it to help smooth those costs. It is looking at our, it's looking at how this curve changes over time. And I think I told AFC, CalPERS will tell you this curve gets to zero in 30 years. And I would have a different opinion on that based on how it's continuing to change year over year. So how we use it to meet our short-term needs, I think, depending on what CalPERS does and what returns do, I think that it leads, I think there's an opportunity, I wouldn't put it in, I wouldn't say yes or no for sure.
Understood. Thank you.
Other questions? Kerry?
Thank you, Katie. Good to see the, the presentation again. Just to re-ask one of the questions I asked then is if we were ever to consider remodeling the council chambers, the asset replacement fund is where that would come from, given it's towards improvement of facilities?
Likely, I mean, I think as different projects, depending, there's, staff is always looking for grant funding opportunities. And sometimes asset replacement actually provides a nice matching fund source. That's our most flexible funding source for, for improvements.
Thank you. And then a second question is, so there's a reference to the, the Paulus Colorado's fund there. Is the Paulus Colorado's fund, is it an unallocated account? Is it a reserve account? How is that allocated? And what's the amount?
It, it's its own separate fund. Oh, I didn't bring my acro. It's its own separate fund. So it, and then it gets reported up and rolled up into our general fund group in our annual comprehensive financial report. And I am gonna, I, I don't want to give you the wrong number. No, it's less than that. Because we have used it for, for different things throughout the years. I can get, I can get that back or I can, I can look it up and.
It's a little more than.
Two and a half million.
Two and a half to four, somewhere in there.
But keep in mind, a lot of that money, which is totally our mitigation.
Sure.
Fund, has not yet come to us.
Got it.
There's a big, once they pull the grading permit, you get another million plus. And then for every house that they pull a permit, we get so much more. And so it ultimately comes to about 17 million total that gets paid to the town. But already we've spent some of it.
Got it.
And I, I know we're also do quite a bit of interest on some funds as well, on that fund as well. But, so right now, the fund balance is, I would say anywhere two and a half to four, just off the top of my head. But we are, do more depending on, relative to the terms of the agreement.
And follow up on that to the town manager. Correct me if I'm wrong, but did that, did the Paulus Colorado's site just get recently acquired?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, no, the same property owner. They're, they were out to bid for proposals from developers. And I may just for making a note to myself to call the engineering firm tomorrow to find out where they are in that process. So it's, they got a little ways to go. They're getting closer to selecting a developer and then get moving to, to do the development. They, they have all their, a lot of their permits are lined up and so on. Mr. Mayor, can I make some comments earlier? So what you're wrestling with tonight, this is a good problem to have or a challenge, not a problem. Some surplus funds, but they're one-time money. So your CFO was saying, here's some one-time uses of the asset replacement fund. So this, on your top 10 priorities for the next two years, number two was to look at, for us to keep going on the long-term financial strategic plan. You're going to hear a little bit about long-term revenue and expenditure forecasting for the general fund. We have a lot of practices here in Maraga that have been challenging due to limited resources. For, for most California municipalities, they have internal service funds or a variation of them, especially when it comes to the assets that we have. Rolling stock cars, police cars, vehicles, trucks, that type of thing. And certain equipment with a value over a certain amount, $5,000 or some number. And then the really well-run municipalities will also have an internal service fund of some sort for facilities. So you're socking away X amount of money per year to deal with not just replacement of facilities, but maintenance of it. So the window blows out here, we have some funds there to, to cover that. And I know that this organization has been struggling with this for decades. There's been lots of analysis, discussion and so on. So that's why the policy from 2015 was put in place, saying if you have extra money. But is that the right way to deal with it right now? Don't know. But the long-term financial strategic plan is going to help us identify ways to get there. So this is an opportunity for us to put some money into the fund to help revive it a little bit. But how we go forward is still a challenge for us. It's a revenue issue. It's not a spending issue. It's, it's, it's a revenue issue. We have these police cars. We should be depreciating that asset. But in local government terms, when you depreciate an asset, you're putting money into an account. So when that asset's life has ended, we surplus it out, get some revenue, and then we go into the replacement account. And then we, we buy it that way. We just put it in the budget. But right now, what we do is we come to you and we beg you for money so we can buy the replacement of, of the car. Does that make sense? So I'm, I'm glad that Katie's here and we're working toward it. This, this, this came up as an opportunity. And then for new projects, the vice mayor asked about a potential project here with this facility. That wouldn't really be from asset replacement because you'd be robbing Peter to pay Paul. So that would have to be a new funding source. Okay, does that make sense? So we're scratching the, the surface here and we're making progress. Thank you.
Thank you, town manager. Okay. Do we have any public comments?
Why? Absolutely.
I'll say it in the microphone and direct it, direct it to council. And then you can decide whether or not to further question staff, of course.
And this is Casey Reiner.
Casey Reiner, again, from the Campolindo neighborhood. So in general, I followed the presentation very well. Fantastic presentation. My understanding is that in terms of the reserve fund balance, we have an excess over the minimum of 50% that we have. And this is a way to transfer it out to some very, very well-thought-through uses. Definitely correcting the curve on our pension liability trust and assets. My question for council is, is thinking about the next presentation where we're talking about the 10-year projections. I'm just hoping that the conversation will kind of weave in the deficit that is projected in the next 10 years and the allocations now for those very, very good ideas, but what that means in the 10 years down the road. Thank you. Just a comment.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for item 9D? I can, I can make it.
Go for it.
Go ahead. I, I move we adopt a resolution updating the town's general fund reserve policy and allocating fiscal year 2023-24 general fund unassigned fund balance and approving a transfer of $1 million from fiscal year 2023-24 general fund to the asset replacement fund, which is fund 750, and $500,000 to the section 115 pension trust, which is fund 605. Is there a second?
Second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. That moves us on to 9E, which is the 10-year general fund financial forecast. And staff has a presentation on this too.
You tired of hearing from me yet?
And this, by the way, we're just seeking feedback.
This is just feedback tonight and the beginning of a discussion. So, all right. So yes, we, this is our 10-year general fund forecast. And we are requesting your council review and provide feedback to staff. So some background on why we're doing this. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that governments forecast major revenues and expenditures. The town has a history of including a five-year projection looking forward for the next few years in its budget book as part of the budget process. A 10-year financial forecast helps demonstrate anticipated financial trends, not just in the immediate next year budget cycle, but looking beyond. And it's a tool to inform budget development and financial planning. It allows us to have conversations about what steps we may want to take outside of the budget process for that longer look. I also really want to highlight, the forecast is not a budget. So it's not detailed enough, it's not nuanced enough. This is like, you know, we will be taking a scalpel to the budget, looking at that and looking at what we truly need. This is really applying trends and moving it forward. So what was considered in building this financial forecast? Looking at our historical financial results. And while those aren't necessarily presented in the forecast presented, they are taken back into context. We are also looking at revenue projections. CalPERS investment returns and, and what CalPERS is doing is a big impact for us. And then we also do our best to look into the crystal ball and figure out what's going on in the global, national, local economy, taking into account the indicators that we think we need to consider and do our, do our best. So some general assumptions, this is my caveat. This is all the things that I'm, that are not included in, in the assumptions here today. This is only the general fund. We have Measure K, we have asset replacement, we have Paulus Colorado's. None of those funds are included in the forecast here. This is only for our general operating budget. This is where the most, the majority of our operating revenues and expenditures currently come from. Measure K, for example, is really used primarily for capital right now. So it's not included in the forecast. We are building off the fiscal year 24 and 25 recommended adjusted budget, which was presented earlier this evening. So we're taking those numbers and going forward. I'm not building in, we did not build in a specific recession impact here. Honestly, the town's revenue sources, property tax, if that's hit by another housing bubble, we'll see that a year later. We'll have a year to address that, kind of within the budget planning cycle or through mid-year. Sales tax, our sales tax consultants are already building in uncertainty. So if we layered on a recession in front of that, we might be double, double doom, doomsdaying there. If there's a lot of uncertainty, so we don't want to, to build that in. And then some of our other property source, or revenue sources like parks and recreation, chances are if we see a slowdown in those, we would have some naturally occurring operating expenditures. So we, again, didn't want to only do a recession on the revenue side without taking account some of the natural harder to, harder to really estimate savings that would fall out on the expenditure side. No budget, budget balancing measures. This is if we did nothing. No budget, budget balancing measures. This is if we did nothing and just went on and kind of assumed everything as usual. So budget balancing takes place during budget development. We work with the departments. What do you need? What are your revenues? What are your new revenue sources? Are you updating your fees? What do you need operationally? Um, so, so that's where that happens. Um, we do have a legal requirement to adopt a balanced budget. Um, and so this is really showing the trends without additional action. The change in unassigned fund balance is, um, really the net change in revenues less expenditures. Where, um, as we, as you decided this evening, we are changing how our fund balance and reserves will be on the balance, balance sheet, so that, that change is not reflected necessarily, um, in these figures. And then, again, we don't assume any other use of town's funds. So we're not using Paul's Carlos, Colorado's, we're not using Measure K. Um, and we're not tapping into the pension trust in these figures. Let me, I'm gonna stop there and ask if anybody has any questions, because I'm gonna throw a lot of information at you.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so our revenue assumptions. Um, we are forecasting a 3% in property tax revenue year over year. That's based on historical actuals. So if we look back and smooth it out, we're about 3%. Our Bradley Burn sales tax, that's the 1% sales tax that we, it's, that we pay at the store um, for online transactions. It's part of the county pool. It is not Measure K, Measure K. Um, that's based on our sales tax consultant projections and working with them. Um, and then our, generally, all of our other revenue sources increased by 3.3%. That's the 10-year average of the Bay Area Consumer Price Index, CPI. Our expenditure assumptions, I'll, um, get into a lot more detail. So our salary, our personnel costs, so these are all of our, our people. Um, our salary, salary increases, we're projecting a 3.3% increase in the forecast. I wanna be clear, our, all of our MOUs expire June 30th. Um, however, I think it's unrealistic to not assume any sort of inflator. So using the 10-year average CPI, it's historical information. It's based on the local region. It gives us something to, to put forward. Healthcare increases, um, are forecasted at 12%. Uh, that's based on our current MOU provision for health insurance. Says that the town will cover health and care cost increases up to 12%. And after that, then, um, there would be, employees would kick in a share so that. Um, and we've, I think this last year, we had our healthcare rates that went up about 10%. So it's not out of the ballpark in terms of historical norms. And then we're not including any change in regular authorized positions. Um, we do have a couple grants or limited-term positions that are included through their current authorization. But beyond that, we didn't assume we're adding one staff a year or we're reducing. It was just current staffing moving forward. Pension costs. Um, so our normal contributions through CalPERS are a percentage of salary. We didn't specifically change, forecast a change in contribution rate. They move around the margins, around the edges, year over year, depending on CalPERS returns. But generally, they're, it's a slow increase. The discount rate, we assumed that CalPERS would continue to have a discount rate of 6.8%. The discount rate is the assumed rate of CalPERS investment returns. And what CalPERS does is every four years, they do an asset, asset liability management cycle that they look at their discount rate assumptions. They look at their actuarial assumptions. And any change, they're doing that right now, any change that the CalPERS board makes in the discount rate will impact our budget and our pension costs in fiscal year 2028. And then just for reference, over 30 years, CalPERS investments have gained on average 7.7% on their investments. So, um, you know, it fluctuates in the short term, but, so the 6.8% discount rate, you know, at this point, with the information available, seems reasonable to continue. Um, and then our unfunded accrued liability. Um, CalPERS has a pension outlook tool that we use. You can put the assumptions. You can, when is Pepper gonna be, your, your staff is gonna be fully Pepper? Um, you, the projections that we've used also take into account CalPERS' most recent investment returns of 9.1% um, as of June 30th, 2024. So we've gotten them as current as we can. You saw this chart previously, so this is again our projected UAL. Again, projected to peak around 2032, 2033. Um, and we're really expected to hit about $1 million in fiscal year 2028. So we're seeing a relatively sharp increase in these past few years. Hopefully, those increases will get a little bit smaller and then we'll plateau before we hopefully see a dip. And then other general expenditure assumptions. So we, um, are assuming a 10% increase in insurance premiums for the town's general liability, workers' comp insurance. Over the last two or three years, we've seen a really dramatic increase in our insurance premiums. We're hoping that's going to flatten, but we're trying to balance between the insurance market for municipalities, what we've seen and what we know. We're also assuming a 6% increase in utility rates. Um, and then, again, using that 3.3% inflator on all of our other operating and maintenance expenditures. So I'll stop there for any other ques, any questions on any other assumptions.
I'm seeing, uh, no.
Okay. Okay, so, um, it, this is our 10-year financial forecast. Um, expected expenditures are projected to exceed revenues without any addition, any additional balancing actions beginning next fiscal year. The red boxes there show the net operating deficit, so revenues less expenditures. Um, the green trend line shows the deficit as a percentage of our operating budget. So, um, beginning in fiscal year 26, that's about a 4%, of, um, operating expenditures down to, it's about 16.7% in 10 years. So, this is not a, this is never an easy chart to show. Um, but I want to say that, you know, this is not a dire situation. We're not going to be looking at slashing budgets. I think this is an opportunity to really be strategic. How do we allocate resources? And then it's also time to, we have to look at when we do the budget, one-time and ongoing budget balancing actions. And really, I think this is the time to start looking at what other potential actions do we need to study as staff and as a town to improve our financial outlook? Um, so this, oh, sorry, looks at use of the pension trust. We allocated additional funds there. We know it's coming. When do we use it? How do we use it? You know, what does that look and how do we help smooth those costs and help us maintain a balanced budget through those peak years? Um, updating our reserve policy. So we did a little bit of that to, this evening. But also looking at our, our reserve levels, the proper levels. Do we need reserves for generally, or can we do some more targeted reserves based on the risks and potential, um, potential impacts out there? These are the discussions that we can have and we can look at and just make some decisions. Um, or keep it the same. Um, studying and identifying potentially, potential new revenue sources. Uh, we've mentioned, um, lighting and, uh, landscape district. We can, we can start to really study those and look at what's feasible. We have Measure K as, um, you know, that expires in 10 years. But looking at what else can we look at as a town to help support our revenues? Um, because that is from a, our expenditures are out, if we do nothing, the expenditures are outpacing the revenue, our revenues. Um, and then also looking at a fee study, looking at our regular operating fees, uh, looking at our developer fees. We have to keep those up to date and current anyway, but also looking at how we can, um, in our cost recovery programs, maximize that cost recovery. And this is just scratching the surface. Um, you know, this is, again, intended to be a, your feedback and, and input and discussion on things we can take. So as we look forward to the budget, we are doing, we're under, budget development is underway. The forecast is not a budget. This gives us a chance to be very strategic and really take a hard look at our revenues, really take a hard look at what we need for operations. How can we shift things around to meet our operational needs? But how do we, how do we do that carefully and, and collaboratively with all of our departments? The forecast informs the budget. And then also, we do have, uh, uh, we are charged with bringing forward a balanced budget, so that's what we will do. Um, and that's, you know, but we have to be mindful of the larger context. Um, and so with that, we, um, I'm here for your questions and your feedback and, um, there we go.
Question. Brian?
Yeah, I'm wondering, um, what, what were you surprised by? I mean, did it turn out kind of the way you thought, or was there anything really learned in the exercise?
I think looking, for me, actually looking at our recent historicals and how we have come back on our actuals from the COVID and the shutdown, and I would, um, I'm really actually looking forward to seeing how we end out fiscal year 25 to see how that informs future years, actually. I have a lot that I'm just not, some of the trends were very, uh, interesting to look at and to follow. In terms of going forward, I think, um, the pension, pension costs, I've, this is not unique to Maraga. This is representative of any CalPERS agency. I think looking at our opportunities for, um, the opportunities that we have for building revenue and developing new revenue, I think is, um, where that's gonna be, where we're, if we can be creative and really think strategically about it, I think we can come up, you know, how we can think and develop our revenue sources and, um, maybe not just, not just what we currently do, but looking at that new potential options, I think is where our real opportunity is. I, I pivoted from your question. I'm sorry.
So it, it sounds like, um, it wasn't too far off.
It wasn't too far off what you thought, but some of the trends are just too short because of COVID to really have a lot of confidence in what they're really doing.
Yeah, I mean, we knew, and I guess this is also, I've only been with the town for a year, so I have some, only so much personal experience in working with the town and really seeing how we operate and, and learning how all the other departments run their, their programs. Um, I think, um, being able to, I just lost my train of thought. Um, so I think the more I am able to work with our departments and, and be part of the budget development, you know, as going through the budget process, I think we're really going to get a sense of, were these projections too broad? Or are they more in line with what we expected? But I always knew coming here, and I knew we, we have limited resources. We're a small service town, you know, a small government town. That's kind of part of Maraga's legacy. And so I'm not surprised by the challenges that we have. But I'm also not intimidated by them.
Questions from the side?
Um, sure, yeah. Uh, so earlier we had, uh, senior planner Brian Horn, uh, represent on 2024 Housing Element and our target goals for 1,100 units. And within, um, our forecast, uh, was there any factor of potential revenue sources that could encompass an aspect of that development? Not necessarily the full benefit of incorporating 1,100 units over an eight-year plan in a 10-year forecast?
So the forecast takes into account our current budget, and that's based on current development activity.
Which has been?
Right. So I think we did include, you know, we did have some anticipated projects to be working on that were included in this, this year's budget cycle. But we didn't anticipate, we didn't project, and, you know, significant changes in development activity. I think that is something we can definitely look at in future forecasts. And as we start to see, hopefully, more, more housing projects come in and what that, how that would impact our forecast. But at this point, we kind of assumed, based on where we're currently budgeted, um, and to see what comes forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on that point, that's a very good question. But first, um, we're heavily dependent on property tax and sales tax. So those are very stable and very predictable for, for Maraga. And, um, having Measure K is very helpful. A lot of transactions are done on the internet. We benefit from that on the Measure K side. So to the council member's question about development, we're just starting with this tool. And as we get into it and it's more refined, we'll, we'll do some scenarios, right? Like Monte Carlo scenarios about, okay, if we build 40 homes in this year, what happens? But it does go to show how the future of Maraga is, we could talk about new revenue sources. We can't really talk about cutting anymore because we're so lean. And you'd be, we, we have infrastructure challenges and service challenges as it is, right? So we, we, we can't say, well, we'll take longer to respond to police calls, or we'll take longer to fill potholes. That would have the work, it would have the opposite effect, it'd make it more costly, lawsuits and so on. But these delays that we're experiencing now, we do have some, um, development projects that are coming up. It's taken 10 to 20 years to get to where we are. And there's delays, there's lawsuits and other reasons for delays. So that will impact our, our revenues and with lawsuits and so on, we have more costs associated with that. So, um, we need to grow the economy. We at least need to be sustainable. Uh, so, once we get moving, we have the grocery outlet, some restaurant pads coming. And eventually, we'll, we'll have some housing starts. That will have a positive impact on our cash flow. But we're gonna have to put that into the model. This model's going to be fine-tuned. You're seeing the very early stages of it. So it's very transparent. It's very simplistic and straightforward. I hope that helps.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, thank you.
Lisa? Carrie?
Um, would you mind going back to the, the slide where you had the potential actions, that one? Um, so, uh, in, in terms of the item, looking for specific feedback, once we get to the comments section, this is sort of the roadmap of ideas that staff is putting forward to, to elicit our input on for how we might be able to bridge some of these gaps. Is that?
Absolutely, and, and then some. I think we, you know, yes.
My, my suggestion, if you would mind, Mr. Mayor, if we leave this slide up, we'll move to that section.
I have a question. Katie, and it comes off the slide. Updating the reserve policy, you know, we have a policy of 50%. And I know that can vary from towns and my familiarity is, I think the larger the town, the smaller the percentage in, in general. Do we have any metrics or analogs that might help us, help inform? And I'm loathe to ask that question because it can be very emotional.
Yes. So GFOA, um, has recommendations of what, what your, what agencies should consider when developing their reserve policies and finding that, that right balance. Um, at a minimum, it's two months of operating revenues or expenditures, I think, depending, is kind of their minimum recommendation. But I think it is dependent, you have to look at what are your revenue sources? What are more, um, I would say a town that is highly dependent or a city that's highly dependent on sales tax, it's a lot more volatile versus in California, property taxes are a fairly stable, consistent revenue source. So you have to look at your mix of revenues. You have to look at your area and what types of disasters you're prone to. And so I, I think it's, um, there's no right answer. There's no prescriptive answer. But I think it, I think you can, it's worth relooking at, is 50% the right number? It may very well be after we look at all the factors. We haven't, I haven't done that exercise as staff, but, um, and wouldn't do that if there wasn't, you know, a council appetite for that. It is complex and, um, it, just like anything, you hit, you get new staff. You've been around, you know, you've done something the same way for 10 years. Maybe it's time just to brush it off and look at it again, is kind of part of why that was up there on the recommendation.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on, on that, so Katie's right with the GFOA, CSMFO, they, they have recommendations. Uh, in California, local governments, the, ideally, you'd have a 20% reserve. It would be the 60 days is 16 and 0.6%, but 15%. Um, so a, a working capital reserves would keep you going for a couple of months. And then another 5% for emergency reserve, that gets you to 20%. That's a luxury for a lot of municipalities. Brian, you've been in various places. I, I don't know if they were at 20% or so. But going above 20% is, is pretty unusual. And one of the reasons we've got a AAA bond rating is we're at 50. And one of the reasons we've got a AAA bond rating is we're at 50. Uh, in this room, when the S and P raiders were here, they told us that's highly unusual, 50%. So it's good that we have that, we, however, here's the challenge. So every time we grow the budget, say we add a police officer or we take on, um, a service or whatever, if it, if a net position costs $100,000, that means we have to budget $150,000. That's a challenge. But, so it's making it harder to provide service. It might, we're happy to take a look at it, it might be, we should look at a number that would be good and then, then keep, keep that number, um, if we get to a point where it's very difficult to balance the budget, we'll have to, we'll have to wrestle with this. But it's a good, it's a good challenge to have, but 20% is a sort of a target. The bond raiders like to see, uh, the rating agencies like to see at least 20%. I hope, I hope that's helpful. We're on the extreme high end, extreme high end.
Right, but you, as Katie, Katie said, you want to look at the scenarios and what, what kind of particular risk you're, you're exposed to.
Yeah, I, I'll tell you, I, I, like the school districts, they rarely go over three or four or 5%. Big or small, so it's just your comfort zone, what we're used to and, and that type of thing. It's up to the five of you what your, your comfort level is. But if we've got roads falling apart, buildings falling apart, and we have $5 or $10 million sitting in the bank, that's a tough reality to, to live in, right? But reserves are one-time money, they're not recurring. They cannot and should not be used to add new positions or, or give out raises type of thing.
Right. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, uh, any further input, feedback?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this presentation. Um, again, it's a, a slightly different version of what we saw in, uh, the, the Finance Committee. One that I want to look at, so my, my general view is, sure, we can look at updating the reserve policy, but I don't know that that should necessarily be the, our, our first thing that we explore to, to rate our one-time piggy bank for that. Um, I know that for, uh, two years running now on our goals, we've had looking at identifying potential other revenue sources. So, uh, that includes the money we're leaving on the table by not having a transit occupancy tax, um, uh, and a variety of other options like that. I know that last year, the council urged moving forward with a, uh, an RFP on the Park and Recreation Master Plan and by having that put outside, given how, I'm, I'm just wondering if there are an exploration of these revenue sources, what it would take to do that, and then ultimately setting up for a potential bond or ballot measure with code cleanup things that we've discussed in the past, uh, if that's a way to get that expedited so that we can try to get ahead of the curve, um, to capture some of that money that's sitting on the table. In addition to that, I definitely think conducting a fee study is always advisable. Many fees, uh, that were established some time ago, I don't, I don't know if all of ours have automatic inflation adjusters, um, or when the last time was that we did a comprehensive valuation of those?
We update them annually.
Oh, there you go.
So we update our master fee schedule annually or in this, hoping to move us to a biannual with the, to align with the budget. Um, and then we did a developer fee study in 2016, I believe, or around the, the late teens.
So this would be about, uh, it's been 10 years since we've done a, a study, so I think that that definitely is an advisable one to do. Also would be good for the council to have an understanding because the pension trust isn't that big. Um, the, the economy or the, the stock market's kind of collapsing right now, so it would be good to know what it is, what it's invested in, um, and how that can be used judiciously because it's a, it's a long-term, 10-year problem. And it's only, I mean, I think we put in initially, what, one and a half? And then we just are recommending putting another, so we have to maybe, unless it's lost an extreme amount of value. Um, and then I think we can also look, I, I would recommend looking at the, uh, the reserve policy to talk about some of the other budgeting, um, recommendations that the town manager had discussed previously on how, uh, other towns have for best practices for those things. My thoughts.
No further thoughts? This was just for, um, feedback? We have no public comments, so let's move on to item 9F, which is the Moraga Road and Canyon Road Complete Streets Project Conceptual Design Approval, and we're looking to approve this by minute order.
Mayor, we need a couple minutes to load this up.
Okay. Paper here. Ah. Or something like that. Apparently that program is a big challenge to handle. We're not doing it, we're not doing it. And none of the moms want to raise their hands and say, oh, we're just helping. However, you know, outside of Safeway or, how do you, that's really tough.
My mouth is watering just thinking about it.
Yeah, thank you for the, yeah. Are we ready?
Uh, did you want me to wait for Brian to return?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a form. Yes, of course. We have our full complement of town council members again, town manager isn't here, but if you're ready to go forward, let's go.
Great, just double checking this is on? Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my name is Sean Knapp, I'm your Public Works Director and Town Engineer. Uh, thank you, council members. We're going to give you an informational presentation, getting any feedback that you may have so we can continue on with our project. Um, I'm just going to introduce our team that's here today and have them take over. Um, I do want to introduce Andy Dillard, he, he's with CCTA, uh, he's our, one of our partners, the CCTA is one of our partners with this project, and he's come here to support us tonight, so we appreciate that. He's a project manager for CCTA, working on this project and supporting us. And I'm going to also turn it over to Nate Levine, he's going to do the presentation, he's our project engineer. And more, more than that, Nate's our traffic engineer, so we're, we have a unique situation in our little town of Moraga, uh, that we have this type of expertise. And he's got 14 years of experience as a traffic licensed traffic engineer, which is very rare to have in an agency of our size, so we're very happy about that. So with that, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Nate and we'll get going.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Thanks, Sean, and good evening. Again, my name, my name is Nate Levine, Senior Engineer with Town of Moraga, and, um, as Sean mentioned, we want to kind of provide an update and an overview of where we're at with this project and then seek approval for our next step. So as we go, we'll, uh, we'll see some information and, uh, get into it. So as previously mentioned, we are providing an update kind of on the outreach and what's called conceptual design process, which is what you have in front of you in those drawings. And we'll be reviewing a recommended, um, concept, which we are seeking to move into what's called PSNE or Plan Specs and Estimates, which is more of the detailed design engineering work. And, um, that will become our next step, which also includes environmental clearance as part of that overall process. So a little bit of project background, you all have may have heard of this, but if you haven't, um, the project is called the Moraga Road Canyon Road Complete Streets Project, and it spans from St. Mary's Road kind of to the north, right by the park, all the way down to Sanders, uh, Sanders Drive on Canyon Road. And as you may know, Moraga Road changes from Moraga Road to Canyon Road at, um, Moraga Way and Country Club. So we have about a half-mile segment here, it's continuous, includes all the intersections, signalized and unsignalized within that section. Quickly touching on funding, um, and the reason we're here today is kind of our partnership with, uh, CCTA. So the SS4A is the acronym for States Safe Streets For All, which is a federal grant program. They actually hand out billions of dollars, but that's because most of the projects are fairly large and everybody's competing for that money. We're very fortunate to receive, um, about $3 million from the federal government for what is ultimately a $4 million project. $3 million covers construction costs, which are, you know, the biggest expenditure for a project like this. It's a very competitive process, we were one of the lucky Bay Area agencies, there are about five in total, that are able to receive funding, and we leverage CCTA to help secure that funding and also administer the project because federal projects do require more oversight, there's a little bit more, um, you know, call it risk involved, and having CCTA is very helpful with that, so we, we appreciate their support. So quickly, uh, going over the public engagement process, which has been about almost a six-month process at this point. We started in September with what's called a pop-up event, um, at Canyon Brewery Club, I'll explain a little bit more in a second. That was just more of a meet and greet with some folks in the area, trying to get some understanding of what they wanted out of the project and what their thoughts were. We then moved into Phase Two, which was coming up with some preliminary designs, socializing that, getting some more feedback. And then Phase Three, which is refining and confirming those preliminary designs, and then ultimately presenting to all of you for what we hope is approval of our recommendation. Just some photos, I think pictures are easier than words here. So we did, found a nice sunny day to go out to Canyon Club and talk to folks because Canyon Club is on the corner of one of the intersections within the project, seek some feedback on what they thought was important, um, as far as project goals go, whether it's bike safety or pedestrian improvements at intersections, sidewalks, or just slowing traffic down. So you can see there, they had some little sticky dots, they put on different pictures that they thought resonated well and that fit within the project goal, and it gave us some good overview of what we were looking to implement and, you know, essentially what the project could provide. So using that information, we moved into our Phase Two, which was a community meeting over at the JAM or Middle School, where we had some more folks come out and actually look at some revised concepts that had a little bit more detail to them, soliciting some feedback, as we had a couple of options at the time, and we wanted to understand what the community preference was and how that would fit within the overall network. And then taking that, we really saw that there was a strong desire for buffered bike lanes, which was consistent with our project and grant, um, as well as enhancing pedestrian crossings and just ultimately slowing vehicles down on Moraga Road, which was all really helpful feedback. Which led us into Phase Three, or the, kind of the final outreach phase here, uh, which was refining all of that. So again, taking that feedback, doing some engineering analysis, working on what's called a basis of design, drafting all that together to put together final recommendations and concept designs, which is what you see in front of you on the 11x17 PDF. We found that there was overwhelming support again for bike improvements. Um, we also heard that there were some other aspects, which I'll touch upon in the next slide, that maybe didn't fit within the project, but fit into a larger vision of this project, and I want to explain a little bit more. So ultimately, as mentioned, um, kind of these four real items came out. The first two were support for that bike and ped improvements, like I mentioned, um, and then concerns over speeding. So again, our project is going to provide enhanced facilities as well as narrow some of the lanes. But then we also heard kind of this desire for what's called a Class Four Protected Bike Way, which is either something that has bollards or parking protection, um, we don't have any true Class Four within the town, but Lafayette does. Um, another example would be what's called a Class One facility, which is even more so like our La, La Merinda Regional Trails. So we heard that there was a desire for kind of this larger trail connection or Class Four connection along Moraga Road, as well as additional driveway and intersection improvements within the shopping center, trying to make things a little bit safer. Um, and that fits into this larger vision that there should be a larger, um, kind of master planning effort, and that goes into the, the overall area, which is more than this, this project. SS4A kind of is a little piece and it fits into a bigger piece that we're all working on. So that kind of goes into future improvements, there's a school street connection as well as the improvements to shopping center, um, with development, as well as that multipurpose Class One pathway that I mentioned, which also could be used in auxiliary lane, something we would study in the future. I'll move a little quickly here, um, just not getting too much into detail, but of course, if everybody, if anybody has questions, happy to answer them later. Um, so we do have two large non-signalized intersections within the corridor, uh, Country Club and Alta Mesa. Both see traffic from vehicles as well as bikes and ped. Country Club is one of the larger ones out there, Alta Mesa a little bit smaller, but does have vehicles coming out of the shopping center. We ran what's called a traffic signal warrant, trying to understand if the volumes trigger the need for a signal, as well as looking at safety concerns and queuing. We found that Country Club met the requirement and is recommended to be signalized as part of this project to help provide safety and improvement. We found that Alta Mesa, although does have traffic out there, and I use air quotes here, traffic, it didn't meet what we would recommend for a, um, a signal there. Most of the volume is coming from the shopping center, if that ever was to change, if the driveway was ever to be modified, the need for the signal wouldn't be needed, so as part of this project, we wouldn't recommend signalization, but this might be something that would be fit into that larger study that I mentioned. And then, to a mention, traffic's dynamic, it changes over time. What you see today doesn't mean that it won't go up tomorrow or won't go down tomorrow. But I do want to touch a little bit on the improvements that we are providing for Alta Mesa, because I think as many folks know, it is a, a challenging intersection to get out for the residents on Alta Mesa and then the shopping center driveway where, uh, you know, next to Bob's Christmas tree in the winter. Currently you have four lanes out there, and it's kind of this mixing point where you have folks coming off of St. Mary's, Moraga Road, and they're all traveling in this different area and converging, and then it's not always clear where those cars are trying to go. We, uh, came up with a way where we could fit some more, let's call it, um, lane dedications, where we have a dedicated right turn pocket, dedicated left turn pockets, and just better alignment for folks going through this area. And what that means is that instead of having to cross four lanes of traffic to make your left turn, you now only have to cross two lanes or a single lane in the opposing direction. It also shortens the distance for pedestrians, which is a concern out there, um, and there is no adverse impact to queuing or, you know, evacuation along Moraga Road with this lane modification. It's only happening between St. Mary's and Alta Mesa, everything else is staying the same. There would probably be a little bit of a change to folks that are leaving, we think it's going to be, uh, when I say leaving, I mean Alta Mesa Shopping Center, but we think ultimately it's going to be safer for them, and, um, you actually wouldn't see much of an impact to queuing there. I'll move fairly quickly through this because I think, um, you have it in front of you, but this is, this is the general corridor improvement. It's actually very similar to what we just recently did on Moraga Road in front of Campo. Difference here is we have four lanes instead of two, but 11-foot travel lanes narrows things down, slows vehicles down, providing a nice wide buffered bike lane, three feet for the buffer and seven feet for the bike lane. It's really good industry design that we can provide there, um, nice comfortable facilities and slower movements for the vehicles. Just a photo simulation, I don't think this is hard to imagine, but, you know, pictures do help provide that representation. We're able to, you know, keep everything else curb-to-curb the same. Starting down at Sanders, one of our improvements is moving the crosswalk from what is the north side to the south side, which gives us better sight distance out there, um, and doesn't impact anybody trying to cross the area. Country Club would be signalized, we'd also provide enhancement to the crossings, make it a little bit safer and cleaner out there. Moraga Road, again, follows that cross-section like I mentioned, and then this provides an overview of the change between Alta Mesa and St. Mary's Road. So trying to quote-unquote "control the chaos" that's occurring out there, providing dedicated lanes where folks understand where they need to go based on if they're trying to go along Moraga Road or to St. Mary's. The improve?
Nate, help me understand, backing up towards Canyon, uh, well, where does it go from two lanes heading towards St. Mary's Road to a single lane? Somewhere you're narrowing there.
Yeah, so if you look on the, um, the handout that you have in the 11x17, on the, um, it, it's shown here, but I don't have the, the match line on this PDF or this exhibit. But it is essentially 500 feet south of Alta Mesa, and we're taking the two lanes and converging it into a single lane, so by the time you get to Alta Mesa around that curve, you're in a single lane, and then you're able to either go through or into the right turn pocket for, uh, St. Mary's. And then for folks on Moraga Road right now, it's not, even though it is two lanes, it doesn't serve as two lanes, you're only having one movement through there at any time. You're only having one movement through there at any time. And then we're able to use that space to actually make a dedicated right turn pocket for anybody who wants to turn into the shopping center. Right now there is a space for that, but it's not dedicated, meaning that a car that's coming, you don't know they're going to turn until they get there right at the end. This would give them a space, makes things ultimately safer and easier to navigate.
Thank you.
Of course. Well, I will say if there are any other, well, I can finish here and we can go from there. So we are, the good news is we're on schedule. We, uh, plan to wrap up this phase of outreach and move into the design, like I mentioned, in winter of 2025, which is where we're at. And then design would take us to about spring of 2026. We'd go out to bid for construction and construction would be in summer of 26, wrapping up, uh, ideally by spring of 27. Good news there for us. And with that, gone through the presentation we prepared and happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Yeah, um, Nate, would you mind going back to, uh, this?
Yep.
So, uh, by way of a short explanation prior to my question, uh, after the parade for the 50 year anniversary, it was me, my wife.
After the parade for the 50 year anniversary, it was me, my wife and my three little kids, one of them in a stroller, uh, going across. We, we tried to come back, um, at Maraga Way where the Chevron station is and cross the street. We had known it from the commons to have a sidewalk. But from Maraga Way until midway somewhere, before you get to Alta Mesa, there's no sidewalk. So while there's cars zipping past, um, at high speed, uh, while there's cyclists also zipping past us. It was, uh, the five of us trying to, uh, uh, walk down the road and keep the kids from getting hit by traffic. So what is the, in complete streets, I'm looking at the, at that concept plan again, slide. It shows what the, uh, the existing condition is, I believe, in the proposed condition. Uh, on that concept plan, uh, one, and it shows sidewalk on both sides. Is that a suggested improvement as part of this project?
Great question. Um, so as you mentioned, there are sidewalk gaps in this area. So we are going to be improving the majority of those gaps and I can actually show you what we're connecting. And then there is one area. So I think the area you were talking about, um, please confirm is this area between Alta Mesa and Saint Mary's on the top of the page? Is, um, I believe what you were talking about.
I'm talking about further south.
Sure.
So between the, the Chevron station before you get to Alta Mesa, right?
Yeah.
Where the hillside is that has the tube coming down to the haystack.
Understood. So yeah, that long, so the long section you're talking about, um, we, unfortunately, we will not be closing the gap there because it's not a primary means of access and we're using the funding elsewhere on this project. But we will have continuous sidewalk that runs what would be on the, call it the northeast side of the project. So all the way down from Country Club, you'd be able to walk continuously to the commons. There also is a gap between Country Club and Maraga Way. So if you find yourself on the other side of Country Club and want to go to Maraga Way, there is a gap there. That will be closed in part with this project as well as a, um, a planned development as well.
I would flag for staff that there is a, um, a planned housing development at that intersection at Maraga Way. And it would be advisable to consider, uh, as we have more residents living in that direction to complete that gap at some point and potentially there's a nexus there with that project. Secondarily, I wanted to ask about the, um, the separated bike path suggestion. So my understanding, and I've talked about this when we discussed the, uh, the pedestrian cyclist lane on Maraga Way that could also serve as an evacuation, that it would be advisable to have that with, uh, either a curb or have it be, uh, grade separated for extra protection. Similarly, um, what, what would, uh, how would that happen since it's not in the scope of this project? How would we get to the point of being able to do something like that here? Cause again, I'm not going to let my kids, uh, take their bikes to JM. When, uh, in a few years when they're going to junior high school, if they don't have protection and they're going down basically a expressway.
Understood. So the feasible way to provide that class one or trail facility, I'm, I'm, I'll use trail just for the ease of the word. Would be, uh, would require a curb modification. So there, there's a dollar value that goes with that. We have the space within the right of way. It's just repurposing that space and repurposing where the curb is. You push the curb further into the roadway, you remove what would be the bike lane. But then that gives you space to provide that separation for a trail or some type of separate system for both, could be a sidewalk, could be a dedicated, um, class four, what have you, depending on where you want to go with that. That, that's, so that's the good news. From a feasible standpoint, the space is there. From a cost standpoint, takes time to kind of develop all of that and find the funding to do so, but that, that'd be the big picture there.
And you mentioned, just some follow up in the last one, Mr. Mayor, um, some type of master plan for this. How, what would be the nexus? How do we get something like that moving? We already have the Maraga Center specific plan. There's a development coming in there. How, how do we get a master plan so that we can get something like that planned out and in motion and find funding?
Yeah. So the good news is part of that, um, I mentioned there's a school street extension. We actually do already have a grant for a school street extension study, which is going to allow us to look at how school street fits into there. As well as what facilities need to be near that extension, which, which hits Saint Mary's Road essentially. So that gives us a part of that. Then in addition, we're going to have to provide further study, both from a traffic standpoint, as well as just kind of call it a transportation focus. When there is development within the shopping center and so forth. So it's understanding kind of this big picture roadmap and all the places we want to go. And then putting these pieces together to make sure we're filling up the technical detail with that. So I guess the good news is part of that we're already doing, and then the other aspects, we have plans for, for how to move forward with that in the future.
Perfect. Thank you.
Could I also elaborate on that a little bit? So moving, moving back in the slides, and I think you were keying on this particular slide is, this particular project is part of a larger, uh, desire for improvements in this area. And so this is, this is one of the, the cogs or the piece in the wheel and we're developing as we, we go. It's not going to deliver all the amenities, but, um, as the shopping center develops, it, it really needs to be, uh, reimagined. Cause currently there is so many different driveways, exits, egresses out there that make it dangerous, uh, for, uh, the public as far as, trying to enter and mix with all the different uses in there. So when we have these, um, opportunities come up, we should reimagine how these things are. It shouldn't be the status quo as Nate was, uh, mentioning traffic changes, uh, abilities and, and types of transportation change over time. And to serve that, we need to reimagine our system. And so, um, this particular project that we're talking about today, the town council approved a study of this area. We took that study information and created, um, it schematics and concepts, and we took that out and got a grant for it. The same thing will happen as we move forward. We'll develop, um, concepts, ask for study monies, take those study monies and develop a larger uh, concepts and go out for grant fundings with our partners here at CCTV. That's what they're looking for is to serve the, uh, local agencies and how to partner. And so we have a, a process in place here at Maraga for doing that. And that's been, you know, based on the support of the council, having that vision. We'll, we'll start taking one piece at a time and start looking at how we can put the whole thing together over time.
Thank you. And not going too far out on this, but again, I would just stress again, that as those developments begin to take place, pedestrian and cycling access should be key. And that we hopefully will have a master plan that will include trail and cycling connectivity through to the West Commons Park and the Commons Park to any of the new developments that go through the Maraga Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Other?
Uh, I have a question. Um, I'm a little surprised that Country Club met the warrant. I drive through there multiple times a day. Always takes three trips to the hardware store before you remember everything or get it right. I don't know. I, I'm really surprised and I'm, what is a, what does a signal go for these days? What percentage of the project is the signal?
So the signal from a percentage standpoint, it's, uh, believe, I'm doing some quick math in my head. I think it's around 15 to 20%. So a cost for a new signal is about half a million dollars, depending on exactly how fancy you get with it. It, the truth is that the warrant was tripped. Um, we did run the, we collected data in, uh, the end of, actually the beginning of 2025 for this one. It was good data on a nice sunny day, um, but wasn't necessarily anything crazy. Tripped the warrant. We also are seeing that from a safety standpoint, just because of the way bikes and peds are going. We do need to, you know, provide that safety and that crossing enhancement. So the data is there from the traffic standpoint, as well as the pedestrian standpoint too. And I would imagine over time we'll see an increase in traffic as well.
Nate, related to that, did the curb at that point have any impact of tripping or, or meeting the metric for the light? I hear a lot of feedback from people about the curb and the crosswalk there and, and not having enough time for speeding cars to, um, see the pedestrians.
Yeah. So that comes into the safety standpoint. Um, so the, the curve doesn't have an impact on volume or anything like that, but definitely has an impact on safety. Uh, so again, this is, I'll go back to the, uh, the enlargement here. You know, Country Club is, it's a wide location. I'm sure you've seen some folks trying to cross it and that they're kind of almost playing Frogger. They're trying to figure out when to go. And you also have what's called a double threat is when one car comes and stops, they might get another, they're screening another car that can't see the pedestrian. So you can provide other treatments here for crossing, but if there's a, there's a guideline that you want to follow for recommendations for safety for pedestrians, and actually it would recommend a traffic signal here based on the volume as well as the speed and, and the pedestrian, um, distance that they're crossing. So it is, you know, it is warranted. Um, we are looking for ways, um, you know, as, as previously mentioned, there is a development in the area. And that development could pay, um, their fair share contribution to the signalization here, taking some of the impact off the project. But it does seem that this project, you know, the, the signal fits the project pretty well as far as the goals and safety. And we, uh, we were able to fund it with the, the money we have. Um, and that's excluding the developer, development fees. So if we're able to recoup a little bit more, can find other opportunities within the project.
Great. Other questions?
I, I'd just like to revisit a little bit at the Alta, your study of the Alta Mesa warrant. I, um, hear from a lot of people at Alta Mesa. I'm curious, how many residents did you have feedback from, from that community there? Who make those turns?
Yeah.
Were they well represented?
Uh, it, it, we, I would say we, we engage with them, um, kind of extra effort into trying to engage with them. We had a handful that reached out to us to kind of say, hey, we've heard about this project, what's happening here and had conversations with them. We had a few show up to our public meeting, talk to them and said, please bring your friends, please bring more. We had a survey, we circulated that survey, um, received a handful of responses from folks up there. I mean, there, I believe there are, you know, hundreds of folks that live up there. We did not receive hundreds of responses from them, but we did receive a good number focused on Alta Mesa. And they were supportive of these changes. I, I think ultimately yes, they want to see signalization. That creates a problem just because of how close it is to the other intersection. Even with our smart signals program, coordination gets tricky. So this is, you know, what we're constructing. Nothing there can't be changed in the future and we're not picking physical costly improvements that would be expensive or prohibitive to change in the future. So this is more of, I, I don't want to call it a Band-Aid because it's not, but it's definitely providing an improvement that we can then further refine and improve in the future.
That's helpful. I was thinking it might be too close to the other one, but I don't have that expertise.
It's to, yes, to coordinate this type of signal, um, even if you did it using the best and latest technology, there would still be little hiccups. And there would be other frustrations that arise from it.
I was rather surprised also to hear that more. Uh, did you know that more of the traffic actually comes out of the shopping center there? That really surprises me, given the hundreds of residents up on Alta Mesa.
So the, there, there is, there's an peak, um, from residents leaving Alta Mesa, but there is a very large PM peak of folks coming from the shopping center. Now what's interesting, and it's actually twice as large as the Alta Mesa peak. But what's interesting here is the Alta Mesa, they don't have a choice. They have to use Alta Mesa. The shopping center has other locations, meaning that in these studies that we were mentioning and Sean spoke about, perhaps this driveway needs to be modified. Perhaps it needs to be a write out only and a write, write in. Those are things that we would evaluate in the future.
Thank you.
Got it. Uh, if we could stay on, um, that Alta Mesa, uh, intersection for a moment, if you look at the, call it plan north, uh, where there isn't a crosswalk. Was there any analysis on pedestrian activity along that stretch?
Great question. So we did get pedestrian counts at, at these crosswalks, the, the marked crosswalks. There is, there are, yeah, simply put, there are folks that use this section to go to the commons, but they're not looking to cross back to the other side of Maraga Road. At least under, uh, uh, existing conditions. Part of the other problem is if we were to add, um, I guess maybe I'm wondering, are you asking if there's a reason why we're not providing another crosswalk on this side?
I would just ask you to revisit it. I, just speaking from, uh, my understanding of how my 14 year old kids walk from JM when they get out of school, they hit the Safeway Shopping Center. They do not cross to the opposite side of Alta Mesa. They'll continue down and cross closer to Saint Mary's Road to go to Maraga Commons. And so just, they, they use it as if there is a crosswalk there and there's not. And to the extent that there needs to be, would just be curious if, uh, you would consider revisiting that. And for the cost of say, striping, it's not as much as say a traffic light to install that location.
Yeah. I just want to make sure I understand. So you're, you'd be talking about the parallel north, basically the, the crossing in front of the driveway.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, absolutely. That can be striped as part of this project.
Yeah. Just, just a small ass there. Um, briefly on, um, just so I've got an understanding of, uh, the extent of bicycle, do we currently have it planned as connecting from Maraga Commons? Uh, and then how far down does it go? Just to the extent of this half mile?
So yeah, the buffered bike lanes run the entire, uh, duration of the project.
Gotcha.
Provide the skip striping in the intersection. So it actually connects to, cause there's buffered biking closer to Camino Pablo in that section.
Right.
So we'll be able to take that and continue it all the way up here to Saint Mary's Road.
Gotcha. So we'll have a connected buffered bikeway from Canyon all the way through to Maraga Commons.
Yes.
Saint Mary's Road.
To Saint Mary's Road. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Nate, um, that bike lane on the southern side of Maraga Road as it approaches Saint Mary's Road. Is that a, a common approach to use where you, you sort of bring it out into the road itself and?
Yeah. So basically what you're, I think calling attention to is that it's moved away from the curb and it's split between the through lane and the right turn lane. So in, in, in a situation where you have what's called a dedicated right turn pocket, which is what we have here, you actually are required, um, from legally required. And I can explain the rationale behind it as well, to provide, um, the bike lane to be on the, the left exactly. And the reason is if you do it on the right, then you are, you have a conflict, right? So, uh, currently we don't have that. The bike actually has to stay on the curb side and make its way through the intersection. And then fight with all of the right turning vehicles onto Saint Mary's. So this was actually something that a lot of folks kind of on the bicycle side, when they saw this, they really appreciated it because it's providing that separation safety, which is missing here. Same thing on the other side on, um, southbound. We didn't have that separation either. So separating out that through lane, the right turn pocket and providing this area, um, for the bikes to go through the intersection was a big improvement for a lot of cyclists as well.
Interesting that, because they're going to be crossing that lane, that right turn lane.
Yeah. So it, it's, it's a trade off where, you know, it's a little bit easier to get your way out and look over your shoulder as you're moving. Opposed to having to try to go straight and have a car make that turn. So it's just like a, granted, I know it's a differential of speed, but it's just like when a car would make a, 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 a lane merge opposed to actually trying to cross traffic.
I thi- I think you have to think of it another way. They're not crossing the, the turn lane. They are already on that side and they continue moving forward and the turn lane appears after they've crossed it. And that's where they, the car is entering, the car is entering under the striped green. So there's really not a conflict there. You're, the bicyclist, if you're already in front of the car, is already in front of the car, traveling in their bike lane and they continue in their bike lane. The green striping is to tell the car, this is where a conflict area is. You need to pay attention. You're crossing the bike lane and not vice versa.
It's really analogous to Arinda as, as you head towards Route 24, getting onto Route 24. 24. Okay, okay, I hear you. Thank you. Good.
Just one more follow-up question. So I know that in many other larger cities that have bike lanes, don't have...
Sorry. I know in many other, other larger cities that don't have grade separated or curbed bike lanes, they actually have the green striping the entire length of the bike lane. Is there a reason why we were only doing it at the, the crossing points or? I'm just...
Yeah, no, great question. And I'll, so, yes, about, I believe it was seven years ago, try to not go into too much of the technical detail, there was a, call it a exploratory experiment that was allowed by the feds in Berkeley to provide green striping. It wasn't allowed prior, so either you were breaking the rules or you had to ask for an exception. Seven years ago, Berkeley kind of pioneered it, now it's been accepted. During that time, everybody went kind of to town, painting everything. They realized two things. One, they weren't able to do as much as they wanted on the project because the green thermoplastic to do this is actually very expensive. So you would try to do as much as you can, realize that, oh, I want to go 1,000 feet, I can only go 500 now because I don't have the money. They also found that the maintenance of it, it wears out pretty quickly. So having more of it was not necessarily a betterment. And the idea is that drivers get confused by the green. They're not quite sure what to do, and we kind of, as traffic engineers, after some studies, realized that the best thing with green is, you want to put it where you're telling the vehicles not to go, or where there's something you need to pay attention. So if you do too much, people get numb to it. So what we do is, we do it at the skip crossings here. And what's not shown on this plan, because again, this is a concept here, is we would have about 50 feet of green on each side of the intersection, kind of like you see out Maraga Road in front of Campo. Again, you're telling the cars, don't go here because there's going to be bikes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Ryan?
It, it takes your project from a million dollars to 1.5 to just add thermo. It's very expensive, a square foot.
Are there questions? We're good?
Could I elaborate one more thing, Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, so Nate and his team spent a significant time looking at all kinds of different options for this intersection. And it really boils down to reimagining how this is set up. And we do have the study currently going on for the, for the school street, you know, connection there, and with the trail and with the roadway, which would solve a lot of these issues. And then reimagining how the shopping center is and how they access it. Because in the old days, you know, Alta Mesa being a dead end with so many people accessing a very populated route, area, or, you know, fur throw is not a good design. And they had a lot of cul-de-sac kind of, you know, designs and stuff, and we don't, we're not thinking that way. We're looking at interconnecting, we're looking at access, and we're looking at where to access things. And so with your help, we'll reimagine how this area looks as we move forward.
I think from a comment standpoint, I'm very, very impressed with what your, the design you've put together, be it, it's complex, and we'll, we'll have to see how the stakeholders are receptive to it, i.e. the drivers who are used to, for example, at this location having two lanes in each direction. But I, you know, I'm very impressed and I'm very impressed with the presentation and, and, you know, I'm, any other, other comments? Then I would move that we approve by minute order, the conceptual design for the Maraga Road and Canyon Road Complete Streets Project and supporting project documents, including the basis design, traffic assessments, and outreach summary, and find the technical studies and design work categorically, categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per 15306.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Before we vote, there's no members of the public here, so just to confirm that.
I just do, I, I've got to note that, I guess. I note that there are no members of the public. Thank you for that reminder. First time tonight that you had to remind me. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everybody. That moves us on to council member requests for future agenda items.
Mr. Mayor? I have a request for a future agenda item. I had a conversation with Akalani's High School District Board Member Nancy Kanderski, and we talked about Measure T, which is qualified for the May ballot. And I have given my personal endorsement of Measure T. I know Mayor of Lafayette, Susan Candell, signed the ballot statement, and the Lafayette City Council has already endorsed. I would ask that we come back and add to our next agenda for our next meeting on the 19th, consideration of endorsement. I've already forwarded to the town manager, a draft ballot, or, sorry, resolution for consideration.
I second that.
But how about March 26th, when it's a regular meeting?
It's a little late, based on their timeframe, the, because the election, I believe, is on May 5th, they're looking to try to get, for publication purposes and other things, as many of the council endorsements as they can.
We could do that, but it...
19th is, is, yeah.
It's a study session offsite. I mean, you could put it on there, we could do it as consent.
In the, like in the pre, the front start of the meeting?
Right, without having it be a full-blown department report with people for or against it. It's council prerogative, so.
Does anyone have to come from that organization?
They do not. There are, there is the potential, if needed, for additional discussion, that representatives from MEF might attend.
I mean, it's only six days, though. Seven days difference between the 19th and 26th.
I, it's just the discussion that we had, they seemed pretty concerned with timing, and they were really happy to know that we had a potential on the 19th.
Okay, I still second that.
Thank you.
What do you guys think? All in favor?
For the 19th.
For the 19th?
We'll get it on there.
Brian?
Reluctantly.
Yeah, I'm with you. Okay, other, other...
That does illustrate, by the way, the value of having a legislative platform. We'll get to that in a few months.
Other future agenda items? I'm not seeing anything.
Mayor?
Yes?
We got a letter about, it's relatively new, and this doesn't necessarily need to be a council item, but I would like to hear staff's response on the letter about violation of the housing income limits, or someone who's in an affordable unit and...
Oh.
Will we get some follow-up on that?
Mr. Mayor and the council, I'll do a memo to the council. We're fully aware of the issue, and your staff and the planning department, they're working on it. There's an individual who's writing, calling everybody at the county level and so on. We're on it, we're doing our due diligence. And the town of Maraga is, we only have one development town that has affordable units. On this one, there's five or so units, and we're working on that. There are issues with management and we're on it. We'll work with the individual who's been contacting you.
And I helped approve that unit. Any, any informational items by, by anyone? Town manager, any follow-up and announcements?
I do. Hang on, where did it go? You might be wondering why there's letters in front of you, right? These are letters from Reem Elementary School students. They worked on a project, right town clerk, this was the one where they were, part of their civics lesson, I think. And these are thank you letters to the council for allowing them to go through that, that process, so. Oh, they're for the park cleanup and street cleanup project that they worked on. Sorry, I'm mixing up. We do a lot of good things with the school kids, that's what those are about, okay? So by way, I don't have any other follow-up on the agenda items. We do have a meeting, there's a council workshop on council communication roles and that type of thing, you do it every, every couple of years. We have that coming up on March 19th. That'll be a study session offsite. The next regular meeting will be on the 26th, and we're working on putting together that agenda. That's it, by way of staff follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless there's something else, this concludes our March 12th town council meeting. Bang the gavel. And now that we're through that, I apologize, I woke up this morning...